It's 6:30. I called the July 29th Planning Board meeting to order. And first on the agenda, the minutes of July 22nd. Mr. Secretary.
Can you start without me?
No, not really.
Just, just, I just banged.
We're only going to do the minutes and then ask you if we'd be patient.
There were no comments on the minutes. It was a type of error that was corrected, but I recommend approval of minutes of July 22nd, 2014.
Okay. Was there a second? Any comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post-stay. Next on the agenda, approval not required plans, and we have none. And the next is discussion. Applicant Nathan Ellis Highway LLC, special permit modification to update the equipment list. Excuse me. Expand hours of operation and allow outside parking of vehicles accessory to the primary use of the contractor's yard located at 210 Nathan S. Ellis Highway, East Falmouth. And I would remind the board that this is discussion when we close the hearing. Brian put something together that we've had before, we've seen before, so this is to remind you of the parameters under which we're discussing this. Excuse me. Special permit for contractor's yard in AGAA District, Section 240-38K. Number five of that is that the construction width and grades of the adjacent street and any other street providing access between the contractor's yard and any arterial roadway shall be sufficient for safe travel to and from the site by the vehicles to be stored. And number six under that section, the planning board shall, one, specify hours of operation; two, type, number, or amount of vehicles, equipment, or supplies to be stored; three, what fabrication of sub-assemblies shall be allowed, if any; four, what accessory activities such as ordinary maintenance shall be allowed. Contractor's yard definition, premises used by a building or construction contractor or subcontractor principally for storage of equipment and supplies, fabrication of sub-assemblies, and parking wheeled equipment. So you all have a copy of that in your folder, and these are the parameters that we are allowed to look at under that section of the bylaw. And further, this is a note in regard to that from Jeff Nickerson. At the last hearing, Doug Brown asked for a calculation, I'm reading this, you probably have that in your folders, but just so the public can hear about everything we're looking at, too. Doug Brown asked for a calculation of the total area of the accessory use for public, for parking wheeled equipment over 13,000 GBW at the Cavosa Contractor Yard on 151. The relevant equipment is as follows, identified by paragraph number on the enclosed sheet. Tractor, 200 square feet. Swap loader, each 200 square feet, 400 square feet total. Front-load packer, each 280 square feet, 1,960 square feet total. Rear-load packer, each 280 square feet, 560 square feet total. Container-delivery trailer, 320 square feet. Walking-floor trailer, 400 square feet. The total of the above is 3,840 square feet, which is less than 8.8 percent of an acre. Even if the figure were doubled to account for room between the vehicles and a parking area, the total area would be 7,680 square feet, or 17.6 percent of an acre. The yard is 8.63 acres in size, so assuming an area of 7,680 for the parking of wheeled equipment used in the accessory use, only 2.04 percent of the site would be dedicated to the accessory use. And with, yeah, Jim.
Just the abbreviation, GBW, for those who don't know, gross vehicle weight. Gross vehicle weight.
Doug.
So, you know, really, that wasn't exactly my question. That's a great explanation and detailed information, but what I was curious about was the dumpster operation, the number of vehicles associated with that, and the number of dumpsters, and the amount of area by that, so.
So your question still has not been answered, although this is...
Yeah. I mean, that was a good answer, the vehicles, and it's good information. I don't want to sidetrack the start of the discussion, but I just wanted to comment on that.
You wanted to make sure that it was understood that this wasn't an answer to what your question was.
It wasn't exactly what I was getting at, because I was more concerned with the dumpster business use as an accessory to the contractor yard rather than the number of vehicles.
And that there were quite a few dumpsters.
And it was hard to ascertain, because we have these pads that say dumpster storage, but then when we see the photographs, it shows a big pile of dumpsters out in front of the hoop building, which isn't really designated for that. And we don't really get to see the whole picture, so I'm not really clear on how many there are and how much of the yard they take up.
Okay.
That's where I was going with that.
Okay. And something that concerned me, the Google overflight, it showed quite a few of those trailers there that were provided by Maureen Harlow-Hawkes.
Right. And to me, an accessory to a construction business would be a few dumpsters and one roll-off truck like some contractors have. But I noticed when I was reading back the previous decisions, they operate, the permit was for 14 roll-off cans already, which is surprising to me. And now, if that's a long time ago, then...
12 years ago.
How many do we have now?
So, we're entering into the discussion.
Sorry for hijacking the discussion.
Well, no, that, that's fine. I just want the discussion to proceed, and that is your concern. How many are actually there, and how much do they actually take up? How much room does it, do these actually take up?
Right.
Okay, Jim.
I had Doug's same concern, but even if you double that area you're talking about, Doug, and you eyeball it, and I think the guidance we're giving is 30 percent, I don't think we're anywhere close to that number. This little, I mean, just eyeball, double that one piece right there.
Uh-huh.
And it's not even 10 percent, and these numbers show it's only two. I just think they have lots of room.
But those numbers show that it's, this is relating to the two.
Right. For the, for the heavier trucks, but we also saw the pictures of those during the presentation.
Right. But that doesn't mention the dumpster trucks, I don't believe. That's like, construction equipment.
I know it doesn't, but, pretty big piece of land.
It's an eight-acre parcel.
Okay.
Other comments?
Oh, no.
Okay, okay.
No. I was like...
What happened?
Well, another concern as to that, and we're talking about space and size, now we've got this eight acres, but there was a setback that eats up a lot of that space. And what I'm looking at, one of the concerns that I have is that the original setback is now more than 50 percent of the front setback in one section is dumpster storage, that he's looking for the excess to. And if you take away all the setbacks that have things in it, that shortens your space. I mean, so, as you consider, you know, 2 percent was said here, whatever, that, I have, I have a major concern with this. Originally, when you give a setback, and now it's already being used, I have a serious problem with that.
Yeah, we, my recollection is that we did allow that incursion into the setback because of the narrowness of the law.
For parking?
Yes. Parking.
Parking, not storage of dumpsters. And that clearly says empty dumpster storage is what they're looking to do.
Correct. I mean, you're, you're referring to an old decision.
Right.
That we allowed parking in there, and certain of it was to be paved, and certain of it was to be gravelled, certain percentages. And that was not fulfilled the way it was delineated in the decision, is my recollection on that. Other, yeah?
We're just going to make a couple of points. One is, I thought Attorney Nicholson did a very good job summarizing the issues of the last several years very concisely. I appreciate that. Secondly, it is a good location for this type of operation on Route 151. And I did visit the site, it's a very clean site, very well-operated. The only concern I would have would be setting a precedent for someone else who's going to come in here and say, "Look, you gave it to this guy, are we going to be able to run 24 hours?" So I think that's, that's a concern I would have.
I wrestle with the definition of a contractor's yard and the whole idea of dumpsters, and I look at it, I mean, he is a contractor where his business is hauling trash, not to this site, so it's not a transfer station or anything like that. And I could almost equate it to a landscape business that might have 14 trailers, because you see landscapers pulling trailers all over town, and if they were storing them on that parcel as part of their business, I really don't see a whole lot of difference between the two. I think when you start crossing a line into other things that might be happening there with the dumpsters, then that could be another issue. But as far as leaving them there, I don't really think that negates the premise of a contractor's yard.
Okay. Jim?
Well, I thought long and hard about it, and I agree with everything we've said, but I think there's some mitigating things with the berm in front and the view and the, from the street. And I, I think we need to be more flexible with our contractors in helping them, but I think if, the one thing I am concerned about is the hours of operation, because as we talked about in other areas where I didn't think we needed sidewalks, as pointed out, someday there might be a neighbor there that needs the sidewalks, and we really should consider that. I think the town bylaws on, on operation, at least we should condition it if there's any change in the neighborhood, that they'd have to come back. I'm not ready to give them a carte blanche on the hours of operation, because as, as could happen, there could be other uses in the immediate neighborhood, and that, that's something we have to take into consideration. But right now, I don't know anybody that could hear anything or see anything that goes on this site, so I'm just wrestling between those two different views. I don't know if we have the ability to make them come back, or to do it temporary if there's something else that happens around, but right now, no one can hear them.
We do have the need to bring it back.
Well, that's not, yeah, there are actually complaints.
There are complaints?
There are. They're in the folder.
And there have been...
From the noise on this site?
Each time we've reviewed and revised this, it's been complaint-driven.
I know, but is the complaints from them going and doing something on another site or doing it on this site?
It's my understanding it's from this side.
Correct.
Where are they coming from?
Neighbors in the Butters and back area.
Who's back there?
Houses.
People who have complained.
It was...
No, either house is back there.
Yes.
I thought that was always, I'm misinformed, but I thought that was all state land?
No. No, it's cloverfield, roadway, is it?
I originally thought that, too.
In your, in your file, there's some correspondence from individuals in Cloverfield.
Okay, so they can hear it from there, okay?
Yes, they can.
Yeah, Cloverfield goes back direct.
But either way, the noise is a concern, I think we have to be careful with that.
I would just, just thought we were starting the discussion. The two things that I have concerns with is the 24-hour operation, do not, do not agree with that, and then the setbacks, using the setbacks, the original setbacks as part of dumpster storage. As it goes with, with what they said, I totally understand that they expanded and they have hoop building and things that they need permits from, and, and in my opinion, that's a part of the business growing, and I understand all that. It was just the setback use and the hours of operation I do not agree with at this point in this month.
Right.
Yeah, my, my issues with hours of operation also, the letter from the chief of police referenced complaints in the past. And you must assume, then, that those were complaints that occurred not between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM, but after 6:00 AM. So those, those were dealt with by the contractor. But we don't have any examples of complaints coming starting at 2:00 AM, which is what they're asking for. And if you look at the letter, I'm sorry, the, the permit issued by the Board of Health, it gives the contractor the authority to collect, dispose of garbage, oafel, and other offensive substances between the hours of 2:00 AM and 7:00 AM. And it expires December 31st of this year. So that's sort of like a conditional, "We'll let you try it for a while," is what it's, what they're saying, what they've said there. Now, this board encourages residential development concentrated and above and adjacent to commercial areas, because we're looking to try and avoid sprawl. So if we are doing that, and yet we're going to now allow trash pickup starting at 2:00 AM in, at businesses, how do we know that there's not going to be residences in the very close proximity to those businesses that are being serviced starting at 2:00 AM? So my, my, my point would be to this. My, my suggestion to the board, and I'd be interested in your comments, would be to, under our conditions, dovetail with the Board of Health's conditions and allow the operations on and off the premises on Route 151 at Mr. Cavosa's property, beginning at 2:00 AM, and see what happens. And not make it any farther than that. In other words, and, and, and say that the, that the, that the applicant needs to come back to us prior to December 31st, and at that point, we could reevaluate that particular condition for time on this. I wouldn't be interested in granting hours of operation 24 hours a day, and I would say that in our, and we could be very specific, we could say that only, only vehicles that transport and dispose of garbage or other offensive substances in the town of Falmouth will be allowed to operate off the premises beginning at 2:00 AM.
As opposed to, there were not any complaints about early noise, there were, I believe, two people, one of whom I do distinctly remember, who complained about the backing noise at 3:00 AM, and this was in the North Falmouth area. It was not on, is it Cloverfield?
Yeah.
The, the, okay. Is it Cloverfield or Cloverleaf? The, the road that goes back in there? So there were two assertions that in fact Mr. Cavosa was operating way outside of the parameters of his permit, and already causing some disturbance for early pickup of trash, garbage, whatever, in business areas. Right now, whatever the Board of Health allowed should not be of current concern to us. The Board of Health can do whatever they want to throughout the town of Falmouth. This is not a question that we're looking at. The question we're looking at is the permit on this piece of property. And to that, I have a couple of comments. If we want to look at the zoning of the surrounding property and what could happen, I would remind you that there was a good deal of discussion, and it did pass town meeting, that the 33 acres of which, I think it's a seven-and-a-half acre parcel that belongs to Ballamy, was voted a zoning change to allow the senior care residential zone. That could be built at any time. At that point in time, they did have somebody who was interested in doing that development, and then, of course, the economy hit the skids, and so that has not gone forward. But I would venture a guess that if that zoning allowance, if it was ever built, we would be permitting something that we would root for elderly residents who would locate there. So I do have a problem with that. I do have a problem with what we allowed in the setback and the excessive or overextension, or whatever you want to call it, of the use that was allowed 12 years ago. I find it kind of disingenuous that it was claimed that Mr. Cavosa did not understand the seriousness of the permit and the bylaws, and how they controlled the actions. And although I certainly do understand the growth of a business, I do believe that over a period of 12 years, knowing that he had come back for, I think it was, three changes to the original permit, could have been two, not counting, that indeed he did understand the permitting process and what it did allow. And so I find it, as I said, rather disingenuous to make that claim, which leads me to a philosophical question. If we have zoning bylaws, and all of a sudden, they have been ignored over a period of years, and then is brought before us that, ooh, you know, we didn't understand this, and we allow somebody to get away with that transgression of the bylaws, what does this say about the effect of the bylaws in this town?
And the precedent.
And the precedent. Does that mean that anybody we permit for any number of things can say, "Oh, well, we got our permit, now we'll do what we want to do"? It's happened before. When do you start drawing that line in our sand here and say, "No, we're not going to allow that. We have our bylaws for a reason. If you want to change the zoning of the property, come before us and work towards doing that change, and convince town meeting that that change is a good thing for the town." I am also not saying that Mr. Cavosa is not a good person for this town. Please don't get me wrong in that statement. But as I said, this is more of a philosophical argument that I'm making to the board. Where do we say, "No, enough is enough"? That's just pushing too much. I don't want to drive businesses out of town, but we do have a process in this town. I am hugely opposed, and since Ralph did bring up the Board of Health, and I suspect other members of this board are knowledgeable about that and wonder how this works. I don't think that we should allow this piece of property to be open for those periods of time. We do have residents already that are complaining about the noise. I think it is way too much for that. As you know, the Board of Health said they've never given a permit outside of the 7 to 7 that's allowed. So this is something different for them, too. I'm going by what I read in the newspaper, so if that's not right, sorry, but that's what I read. I think if we wanted to, we could extend the hours from, say, 6 until 10, when people do tend to be awake. But allowing, and, and the routes could be arranged so, as I know Woods Hole is a royal pain, it's a royal pain to drive in in the summer, I don't even go down there, but the route could be arranged so that they can get down there before the institutions open up, I think, to empty those dumpsters as a primary. So I can understand that, but we all work around these sorts of things. So I would be very opposed to allowing a huge extension of the hours of operation. Okay, I've said my piece, so, anybody else?
I, I always worry about precedent, and we just did LIC, and we have a contractor's yard at the end of Thomas Landis there, and, and I could understand them coming to us and saying, "Well, we do a lot of work off cape, we need to get out early, and we need to come back late, and we need to extend the hours." And they are right across the street from a neighborhood, as we heard during that whole process. So I worry about the precedent. And in the, in the same thing is, is what you said about being a little disingenuous. I mean, we heard the term "wharfed," and it's, it's an agreement, it's a handshake agreement, when we trust people to follow what we, what we set. And, you know, it, it kind of bothers me a little bit, and it bothers me a little bit about, here we're going through this process of determining hours, and, you know, you read in the paper that the Board of Health has jumped in ahead of us, and I, I thought that was kind of, not, not a, a good move as far as I was concerned. And that should have been done after we had made our decision on this. And I would have been more than happy to extend the hours a couple, way, a couple hours either way, but now it's a moot point, because he can operate from 2:00 in the morning, so what does that leave us?
It's not from this property.
I, I, well, so...
If we don't allow it, he cannot operate from this property with those hours. That's why I took pains to point this out, because the two can really be confused. Yes, Jim?
Well, you know, a couple things. I appreciate everything that was said, but I believe our role is to deal with what's in force and not be zoning enforcement officers. If the town zoning enforcement officer didn't enforce what was there before, that's really their problem. I think the sound issue and noise, I'm in agreement, we should, we have neighbors there, I'm now looking where Cloverfield Way is, and if I lived on Cloverfield, I, all you have to do is look, I don't think they should get to violate the town zoning bylaws for noise, and I think they should be held to the same standards we hold everybody else for noise. But I'm willing to, at least on my own part, oh, say, "Okay, well, granted, you guys shouldn't have done what you did, but I can still see what they're asking for as far as the space use is working." But I'm not, for the reasons of that, not only the existing neighbors but future neighbors, I, I, it's, it's clear that, you know, we have zoning bylaws for noise, and we should have some reasonable hours that the people that live on Cloverfield Way don't have to hear the backing up of trucks. So that's my own thoughts, but I'm looking for a balanced approach on, on it, but I'm willing, you know, I'm not making a conclusion either way, that was just my thoughts.
Doug?
Well, you know, I was looking at the zoning book and looking at what's allowed in agricultural. Not really a lot allowed. We've allowed, apparently, the previous board has allowed a contractor yard there, but the definition of contractor yard is very small, there's not a lot included. But even as, one of the uses, one of the most generous uses in agriculture was boat storage, but even under that, there's no allowed, no allowance for waxing or cleaning of boats, they can just be stored there. So it's pretty limited what, what I thought you could do. And what's already here has far exceeded what I would expect from looking at the zoning book. Although, my first impression of this presentation was that it was just a normal extension of growth of a business. And when I see that the planning board has previously already allowed 14 roll-offs, I mean, that's a, that's a precedent setting right there. So I mean, to me now, the dumpster business is here to stay because it's been approved. But at some point, it's going to outgrow this lot, and it may have already, but I don't really have that definitively, we're kind of guessing. So that's my, my last concern would be then to say... So that's my last concern would be then to say, has it outgrown the site? Mr. Cavosa himself said that it was inevitably going to outgrow the site, and he felt it was going to be some point, he was going to have to go to a new location with the dumpsters. So, that's where I stand. I don't know, I'm not ready to make a decision, but I'm just still seeking a little more information. I think a site visit would be helpful, but so far, we haven't been able to schedule that.
I believe we were told that, no, we weren't going to be allowed to have a site visit out there as a group.
Right.
Didn't kind of like that response. Any other comments? Ralph?
Pat, with all due respect, I do believe we received a letter from somebody representing Ballymead indicating that they had no objections to this. I believe it was, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but I think it was on their letterhead.
I think it wasn't Jody Shaw here.
Okay, that was him. Mr. Shaw.
He actually spoke in favor.
Yeah, right, okay. So although I agree with your position, I do believe that the owners of that property have not indicated an objection up to this point.
No, I didn't say they did.
Right.
And remember, they've got that 33-acre buffer in front of that, too.
Right. Yeah, okay. Anyway, it seems to me, well, first of all, it wouldn't take a person very long to figure out a way around picking up trash, starting at 2:00 AM in the morning, and not using this property with the same vehicles that are normally used. So that's, of course, not our issue, but I mean, that could easily happen. So we have to realize that, even if we restrict the hours of vehicles going to and from this property, that there very well could be other ways to begin trash pickup at 2:00 AM in the morning. So we need to be aware of the fact that that could very well happen, and we have to be really to meet Joe Blow on the street, and when he says, what did you do? And you say, well, all we did was restrict the use of these vehicles from this particular property and not the whole town.
Because we have no authority to do that.
No, we don't. But I do want to reemphasize the fact that even though you don't think that the Board of Health is pertinent in this issue, I do, and I want to reemphasize the fact that they only issued a permit from 2:00 to 7:00 in the morning, which, of course, expands the hours, effective for only six months, and then evidently, they intend to revisit it also.
Are there other comments?
I would comment, just for further discussion, I would be willing to expand the hours, but not till 2:00 in the morning. I would say, certainly, at least six, and I would consider five, but that would be as early as I would go. And then to 10:00 at night, because that's in line with our noise bylaw.
Well, I've had the pleasure of being woken up at 5:00 in the morning by this operation before they had permission to do it, every Monday or Tuesday. I think inevitably with the downtown crowds in Woods Hole, that we've got to let something start a little earlier. But 2:00 in the morning, I mean, I get up at 5:00, I don't get up at 2:00.
Right. Up at 2:00, and I'm up the rest of the night.
Yeah, that's it.
All right, so if I can sort of summarize, and please, if you don't agree with my summary, there does seem to be some concern about the bylaw itself, and to what point we should allow ignoring of the bylaw in the growth process of a business. There definitely is concern about expansion of the hours. We're willing to give a little bit, but not a 24-hour-a-day operation. And Doug, you said maybe 5:00 to 10:00, I said maybe 6:00 to 10:00 as allowable, with the recognition that, as Ralph pointed out, that wherever these garbage hauling trucks are stored, they could still, by the Board of Health permit, operate in Falmouth from 2:00 AM. So we have limited control over that. There is concern about the incursion on the setback, which we did allow on a previous permit, but we didn't allow it to the extent that is now taking place. We had a limited number, 14, of the trailers that were allowed in there. So there's a little bit of concern about that, although I didn't really hear a lot of concern expressed about the additional kinds of vehicles that Mr. Cavosa is asking for. Is that a correct?
In my opinion, no. Not the types of vehicles he was adding, that's a part of his business, that's accessory use or expansion, from my opinion.
From my opinion, it was, too, yours, too.
And normal growth.
Normal growth.
To be expected, yeah.
So that's not a concern? Have I fairly summarized the concerns? Have I left anything out?
Well, my primary concern is still the size of the secondary business, the dumpster business and the whole operation.
That's what I was pointing out by the
Oh, okay.
Huge amount of extra dumpster trailers or whatever you call them.
Right, because there's growth in both areas, which is good.
I'm not faulting, I'm very pleased.
Long as it fits, right?
But the question is, does it belong in an AGAA area under the special permit that this board allowed and revised several times in the past? That's the question that we're really dealing with.
What also seems to be a question is, at what point do we cap what goes on there? It seems like you can come back and keep asking for more, at what point does it not become a contractor's yard? Do we have a cap for a situation like this? Is it 14 dumpsters, or is it 28, or is it 208?
I believe the cap is defined as 30%.
Right, but it's a
Spatial cap.
Spatial cap.
Right. And I don't agree we should ever change that. I don't know what, I agree with Doug, if what they're doing is actually 50%, we don't know, it's just, we shouldn't do it.
And there was some discussion from Mr. Nickerson that the 30% didn't apply, and it could actually be 50%. I didn't understand that.
I didn't understand that either.
Didn't get that, but.
What? Oh, okay.
So we could get a clarification of that.
Yes, Ralph?
Pat, I just thought I might add one thing.
Okay, good, I understand.
I'm wondering if the real issue about trash pickup is about safety, which apparently is the primary factor that's being considered by the Board of Health. And we consider safety in all of our decisions, all the time. I'm wondering whether or not, if we expand the hours, whether or not we would want to consider certain months of the year, because that's when Woods Hole and downtown and these other village areas are so densely populated. And I would think that we might want to consider certain months of the year to apply for the extended hours of operation.
Okay, the flip side of that is, as far as the residents go, that's also when they keep their windows open.
I understand.
And they're going to be far more disturbed if we do that. But I understand the rationale there, too.
Yeah. I don't think we can approve anything that violates the noise violation bylaw anyways. So that's going to stay in effect, and if they violate that, then the neighbors are going to come at them from that issue, not just the hours, or just the plain of noise.
Well, Mr. Cavosa, again, I'm referring to the Enterprise article, said that he would have his drivers turn off the backup beepers. But that's not the only noise that is experienced, and we can't guarantee that.
And that's more of a danger.
Yes, sure is. It doesn't tell people, you got a truck coming at you.
Or run over an early-morning jogger.
Right.
How can you do, you can't do that legally.
No, you can't.
Safety wise, no.
Right, so, I'm just telling you what was in the Enterprise, and I don't want anybody to be misled by that.
Hours of, let me just make
Disappointing, we're not, John. Rely on what's in the record and your file, don't rely on published accounts of the present company's status.
Right. We weren't smacking you down, Sam.
Just rely on the record, that was important.
I'll give you an example. The concerns of noise in the village of Woods Hole. Steamship Authority has been there for 60 years. We are not supposed to have trucks backing up before 5:30 in the morning because of the noise. I mean, that is an agreement that the steamship tries to do regularly. Sometimes trucks get there and start backing up, and we have to stop them. But I mean, that's a noise already, so anything prior to that is not going to be wanted in the village of Woods Hole. I know that for a fact, we get complaints all the time. So, just wanted to throw that out.
So what we're looking at, one of our prime concerns, is no earlier than 5:00, would we allow the yard to be open for the beginning of the trucks out of that yard, which means they'd hit Woods Hole, say, 5:15, 5:30, something like that. And we would not be interested in allowing operation past 10:00 to be in conformance with our noise bylaws. Is that pretty much what I'm hearing here? Paul?
I'm hearing a lot of discussion about allowing extension of hours, and I think there's some merit there, particularly since we have correspondence from many people in town, police, fire, health, et cetera. And I'm not sure what those hours are. I agree, 2:00 AM is a little unreasonable. But if you were to consider 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM, that's two, eight-hour shifts, that might be a reasonable thing. Given, as Ralph indicated, maybe for a time period at the end of the year, some point in time where it's revisited, and you can see what kind of reaction we get from the public. Now, we want to cooperate, we want to help, we want to do a number of different things, but if we were to do that on a limited basis, we could evaluate how effective that really is. And if it creates more problems, we can rescind that. But I would be in favor of extending it for a limited period of time.
I know we have done yearly reevaluation previously on other sites. Can we do it after six months? The first reevaluation, Brian is nodding his head yes.
Board of Health is, don't they?
I understand that, but I just wanted to make sure, because I knew after a year, we've done that in the past on a site, more than one site, but. So you're saying maybe we should look at it again at the first of the year, given, well, it'd be less than six months, but bring it into conformity with the Board of Health, look, see? And again, after a year's period. Ralph?
Yeah, I'm really getting down to the nitty-gritty here. Do we have to put something in our conditions that says that the vehicles will be parked on the site in such a way that they will not be backed up when they depart at that particular hour?
You could do that.
I mean, they could maybe turn them off while they're on their property, if they remember. But I mean, like I said, I'm getting down to the nitty-gritty there.
But that's what we're looking at. We're looking at, how do we want to condition this if we are going to allow the changes that have been requested? So people here don't really have a problem with the additional vehicles that are being requested, although there may be a problem with the additional numbers of the, what do you call them, dumpster trailers or?
Roll-off cans and dumpsters.
Roll-off cans, okay.
Tis both.
Because of what, the storage requirements on site?
Well, just whether or not it's really an accessory to the contractor's yard. It's a contractor's yard for a contractor to keep his equipment, to have his base of operation. But when you have a second business, like, what if it turned into allied waste?
Exactly.
I mean, that would way outgrow this site, and it'd just not be appropriate for what we've approved.
Well, Mr. Cavosa did say that he would be looking potentially with the hoop house only a year or two, and I did question about that.
Right, that was a good explanation.
He's growing his business off Cape, which may mean that he's going to have to locate a substantial part of his business off Cape. I would hope that he does not relocate off Cape, but I think the evidence is before us that perhaps his business thankfully has grown sufficiently to outgrow this particular site.
I hope we can identify some industrial land in Falmouth to be zoned appropriately for a business like this to grow.
I would hope so, yes. I would hope so, too. The other thing is that we also allow emergency 24-hour, and I would not want to take that away. I would definitely want to if the police call, if the fire department calls.
I think that's a given.
It, you may not be, but definitely it should be. And snow plowing. So we need to, snow plowing and other emergency situations allow that to occur 24 hours a day.
I agree with that.
And define it as emergency, not, oh, well, somebody called because of an overflowing dumpster. Okay.
I've got a question. Trying to listen, because what Doug brought up, I was thinking the same time my last meeting when I saw the pictures. Is there some way that we could make, so we don't keep going back and make them redo this and redo this, just make sure that absolutely can't exceed 30%? And if we condition it that way, I mean, that's what the bylaw says, and just reaffirm that, so we can just move on instead of make them come back and re-measure? Because if you look at pictures from the site, they move these things around all the time. It's a moving target, and they can move them here to here.
But 30% of this lot would be every available spot. Think about it. We've got eight, if he went to 30%, that could mean he could put dumpsters all the way up here.
Well, I've
No limit.
No, but right now, I've seen two different aerial pictures, where this area is full of dumpsters, and I just looked one, and I've also seen one where this is full and this has nothing. I think he moves them around from place to place. I'm trying to reaffirm Doug's position that we've got to hold the bylaw at the 30% and not give a waiver on that, and kind of move this thing forward with the time constraints that the rest of us are talking about, which I believe is, I'm just trying to find a balance. Because I had this concern when the first presentation, I said, whoa.
How do we know?
Well, it's, we have a zoning enforcement officer, and if they violate it, they, we're not going to go out there, but somebody could say, hey, that's more than 30%, and then they get to prove it, right?
There are two things that we don't know. Yes, we do have a zoning enforcement officer. All of zoning enforcement is complaint-driven in this town. So it could get to be a very large transgression before anybody would ever say something about it. And I agree, it should never exceed 30%. However, we also had a change in the type of business going on here, too. And normal growth of business, I don't want to kill them for that, but then we should have seen them again. So when there are changes in these numbers of vehicles, remember, Mr. Cavosa also said to us that he had this very large wish list, so he would not have to come back again. He's getting the vehicles that he wants, he's asking for the vehicles that he wants. And he was dealing with two different businesses on this site, and God bless him for having grown his business. But how does that fit with our bylaw and our permit structure? And so maybe as part of this, if we're going to allow it, that if his business changes, we need to actually put that in there, that we want to see him again.
Well, I think Jim had a good point. I mean, as long as we just remind him that it's a 30% of the site for the dumpster business, and keep that in mind as he's growing, and just, you know, work within that. And he doesn't have to come back and say, oh, it's not 14 dumpsters, it's 17, or, because you can't constantly be changing and worrying about that.
So maybe that is a very good suggestion.
I think so.
To put that in as part of whatever we put in.
Just a reminder that that's the parameters.
Stay within the bylaw.
30% of the use of the property for the business. One thing I'm not clear on is the fill stockpile and the processed material stockpile, that 30%, does that incorporate those usages, too, because that's the use of the property?
I think that's the primary use, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the primary use.
What I'm getting from your board is you want us to form a condition that imposes the canister business status that has a subordinate accessory use.
Okay.
And we'll get you a metric.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And you could probably get it down to And you could probably get it down to the count of how big they are, you know what I mean, before it gets, you could probably get to a number.
I'm thinking about one.
Yeah.
Well, we have the spaces, the amount of space that is required.
They're so big. But these things are always so big, so you would know that fifty of them is going to equal-
Yeah.
X percentage.
Yeah.
So, in essence, we could solve the problem with a number.
Okay.
I would just stay with the percentage.
Well, I know, but they both.
Right.
Has to, we can't, I don't think we, I don't think as a planning board, we should supersede our bylaws.
No, I don't either. But I don't think the number is going to work. I think you were right before with the percentage.
Right.
Because these things change and they rust out and they get thrown out.
No, no, I mean, as guidance, not, you know, could have a count. You're getting close.
It's a lot of different sizes, too, though.
Other comments? Are there other concerns? We've got space usage, we've got hours of operation.
Timing.
Timing. That's hours of operation, right? Oh, oh, the one we're going to have another look see, like the Board of Health is doing. Okay. Is there anything else that the board wants Brian to incorporate in, to a decision? Okay. It looks like we're there, Brian. So, next meeting, we'll have-
Draft, we'll draft a motion for further discussion for the meeting on, uh, twelve.
Twelve. Okay. And I will remind the board, is there anybody who knows they can't make a meeting on the twelfth because this takes a supermajority vote? You're right, don't you wish? Is there anybody who knows at this point that they can't be here? Ken, I think, can you?
I do not know yet.
Okay.
But I can probably work something out to be here if we need to-
At least for part of the meeting.
Yes, for a portion.
Twelve is okay for me.
You're calling it fine. You may want to discuss the motion at your next meeting if you don't have the form-
If we don't have form, okay.
... or the vote, you can always raise the vote.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you for a very thoughtful discussion here tonight. So, we will move on. Planning board articles for November annual town meeting, no.
Take out of order.
I'm sorry.
Seven o'clock. Do we need a motion to take out of order?
Sorry, yes, we have to make a motion to take it out of order.
Like, make a motion to take out of order so we can go to the public hearing?
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Okay, do I have a second on that, to take it out of order?
Second, yes.
We moved a second and to take GSTBS LLC out of order. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And for the applicant, please, Laura.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Laura Moynihan for the Record and Attorney, and I represent the applicant. I have filed some written correspondence. I don't know if all the board members have seen it, outlining some of the issues that I'll just touch on briefly. We also did amend the plan for you. I do have reduced copies here, if you'd like to have those. So, I just wanted to touch on briefly the threshold questions. I know that Mr. Curry had written a memorandum today that was sent to the planning board members. Are you familiar with that memorandum?
I did not see it. If it came by email, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine.
What are we doing here, Pat?
It is, okay.
Okay. So, there appears to be a threshold question in terms of the application, so I'll just touch on that first. What I have said in my correspondence is that there currently is a commercial nursery operating at the property. That was one of the points that Mr. Curry has raised in terms of meeting that threshold criteria for making the application. With respect to Mr. Curry, he has opined that he doesn't feel there is a commercial nursery operation at the property. The applicant disagrees with that. The definition of nursery under the zoning bylaw is a place where trees, shrubs, and plants are grown, whether from seed or otherwise, including plants maintained for sale on or off the premises. There is no minimum area requirement under the provision of the bylaw which the applicant has applied, meaning there is no minimum requirement as to how much of the property needs to be in nursery use. The applicant has put together a list of inventory to just file for your record of the nursery product that is at the site. It's a substantial amount of nursery material. The value is estimated at approximately a hundred and five thousand dollars. You can see from that list, there are numerous trees, plants, shrubs, in terms of that nursery stock at the property. So, the applicant's position is that there is a commercial nursery at the property. It's not a private operation, it's not a residential operation, it is commercial in nature. Plant material is grown at the site and sold and used in off-site operations. It meets the definition under the bylaw. The, the section of the zoning bylaw which the application is made under is two forty thirty-eight M, which you know. It requires only that a quote "portion" of a lot be devoted to nursery use. The evidence that we've presented, including the photographs as well as the inventory, does show that a portion or portions of the lot are used for nursery operations. We've also identified those areas on the revised plan, which I've given you. There's no requirement in the bylaw that it be a substantial portion of the site. There's no requirement that it be the principal use of the site. Those concepts were originally proposed by the planning board to town meeting when this article was adopted, and they were later changed on town meeting floor after consultation with the Attorney General, because it was determined that that type of regulation of agricultural uses was not permitted under the statute. So, again, there's no requirement as to minimum area, it doesn't have to be the principal use, and it doesn't have to be even substantial, only that a portion of the lot be devoted to a nursery use. The other threshold question is that the bylaw says that the storage use of vehicles and equipment has been previously accessory to the commercial nursery operations. The bylaw does not say that the specific trailers and trucks and even materials, that those particular items had to have been used in the nursery. Because the wording is, it's the storage use, it's the storage of items is the use, not the particular items themselves. The storage use has to have been previously accessory to the nursery. In this case, the planning board made a finding in two thousand and four when it issued the special permit, that storage use of this, of vehicles and equipment and materials used off-site was previously accessory to the nursery use. So, my submission is that finding has been made, that threshold test of the bylaw has been satisfied. Further to that, we have filed the history of the site with you, and that history indicates, in addition to the two thousand and four finding, that the storage use has been previously accessory to the nursery operations. You do not, so with those two particular questions, the applicant's position is that the threshold requirements for application under this section have been met. I know that Mr. Curry disagrees with that. My suggestion would be that this is obviously a very important question. It's important to the applicant. It requires, I think, thought, and I think it also should be referred to town council for a legal opinion. That's important, because this particular bylaw provision really hasn't been utilized. To my knowledge, the only party that's applied under it has been the Tavoris family for this particular property. So, it's of, an important issue to contractors in the community, it's an important issue to the applicant, to make sure that these threshold questions are thoroughly explored by the town through its town council and that an opinion be issued. So, that would be my suggestion. If the board agrees, that that be referred to Mr. Duffy and that the hearing be continued for, to the end of August, to allow him sufficient time to do that. Having said that, just some minor additional points on the plan. You had asked for more specific detail, we've given you that, we've identified the nursery areas, we've identified the material storage areas by A, B, and C. Those areas match up to the revised lists that have been provided for your file. We've identified the vehicle equipment areas, A, B, and C, and those areas now match up to the lists you have in your file. So, I believe that we've addressed the request for additional detail on the plan. Those are my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you. Now?
The, you, you previously have referenced the fact that what you're requesting applies only to the eastern one point two acres. Is that still the case?
No. The application, I don't think I had said that what we're requesting applies only to the eastern one point two acres. That's the existing special permit that is on record now. That was granted in two thousand and four.
Right.
The, the special permit that we are requesting applies to the entire property.
Okay. Now, can you show me on this map that you gave us, where the eastern one point two acres boundary is?
Yes. It's the area here. Move back. Very back of the site.
And the full, and the forward, the forward boundary is where? One of those dotted lines?
The first dotted line, you see the, the arrow or the dash line that the surveyor has put on, and it says, "Area approved for storage by special permit issued by the planning board."
Okay, between those two lines?
Correct.
Oh, so that's the one point two acres?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you just told us that there is, there are things being grown on this property. Where are those things that are being grown on this property located?
Next to the line that you were just looking at, Mr. Herbs, there's a note, "Large Tree Nursery."
Uh-huh.
That area, there's also a note to the left of that that says nursery.
Yes.
And then further to the left, next to the greenhouses, between the greenhouses and the paved parking, there's a reference to nursery plants, adjacent to the driveway. Those are the nursery designated areas.
All right. So, the area that's designated "Large Tree Nursery," part of that goes into the one point two acres, does it not?
Yes.
All right. Now, the, the September eighth two oh four special permit, item number six says, "The plan shall be amended to not show any by right nursery uses, activities, or storage within the area to be gated and designated."
Correct.
So, it looks to me as though that is, that is not being complied with. You just said that there's growing going on in there, and yet, number six says that you, that the plan will show that there will not be any by right uses or activities or storage within the gated designated area, and the gated designated, in the gated designated area, I believe, is the one point two acres.
Correct. And the application before you is not only for a special permit for the newly proposed storage areas, but it's also for modification of the existing special permit. And we did that on purpose in the event the planning board deemed that condition necessary to modify that condition or any other aspect of the permit. So, yes, that condition does exist in the two thousand and four special permit, but you have before you a request for relief to modify that as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan?
So, I was trying to listen intently, but I didn't understand your explanation on the two things. The two thousand and four accessory use, storage use, so are you saying that because this one point two acres was approved for storage, that, that gives you the right to, to create more storage? Is, is that what I'm getting from?
No. The, the two thousand and four special permit applies to the, that rear portion of the site only. That permit is relevant because it was issued under this same section of the bylaw, thirty-eight M. It was a newly adopted bylaw at the time the planning board issued the special permit. And the reason it's relevant is because there was a finding in that permit that the so-called storage use was previously accessory to the nursery use on the property. That's a threshold question for you now, in, for this new application. You have, the bylaw requires you to make a finding that the storage use of vehicles, equipment, and materials that are used off-site were previously used in the nursery operations on the property. So, what I, the reason I'm saying that permit is relevant is because the planning board already made that finding. It's evidence that that finding has already been made. My submission is you can rely on that former finding for the new application if you want to. If you want to go further than that, you can look at the history of this particular property that we've provided you with, and you can make a new finding and say, "It's clear from the history that the storage of vehicles and equipment and materials were used in the nursery operations." So, that's why it's relevant. I'm not saying that permit gives us a right to a new permit, it's just evidence to consider.
Okay. I also, if I could, I didn't really understand the Attorney General decision that you referenced. Could you just explain that briefly in a simple way?
Yeah. In, in the packet that I had filed, the, the creation of this particular bylaw went through quite a bit of testimony, public hearing. Mrs. Carefoot was there, I believe, so she may recall. The drafting of the, this particular bylaw was done very carefully, because, as you know, with the application you just considered, there is another bylaw, the K bylaw, that some contractors utilize for special permits. That K bylaw is fairly straightforward. Contractor's yard may be allowed in an agricultural district on the following terms and conditions. The M bylaw is a little bit different, because it really was created for this particular situation where you had nursery activities or agricultural uses on a piece of property, where the storage of equipment and vehicles that were being used off-site started to become more of a noticeable use on the property than merely just vehicles and equipment that were being used in the nursery operation. It was being used off-site as well. So, my point is, is that when the original bylaw went to town meeting, it had language in it that said, "The lot or a portion of the lot shall have been used principally as a contractor's yard or for substantial commercial agricultural operations." That was the original language of the bylaw. So, the applicant would have to meet that threshold requirement, substantial commercial operations, nursery operations, okay? That was taken out of the bylaw. And what you have now is the bylaw that's before you. And that bylaw that's before you says, "Any portion of a lot which is currently in agricultural use for commercial nursery operations." So, there's a very important distinction there, and that's why I feel that a legal opinion- opinion is important here. The distinction is that there is nothing in the bylaw that was approved that says how much nursery operation is required. All it says is a portion of the lot.
Okay. So then, we drafted a bylaw that was very specific to the substantial wording?
Yeah.
And you were saying the attorney general found that to not be appropriate?
In consultation with the attorney general's office before the bylaw went to town meeting floor, it was determined that there were restrictions in the bylaw as drafted originally that would violate, violate the statutory by right protections for agricultural uses. And that, and so those words, substantial commercial nursery operations, were taken out of the bylaw. The requirement that it, that the yard be in existence as of 1988 was taken out of the bylaw. So the point being that in order to get the bylaw approved through the attorney general's office, the bylaw had to be broader, had to be wider than what was originally drafted. And so what I'm saying to you is that now we have a question of this particular application that's been raised. Does this application meet the threshold requirements of the bylaw as approved? Mr. Curry's position is that it does not because of the extent of the nursery operation. Maybe isn't, I'm not going to speak for him, but maybe he's saying it's not large enough or it's not enough to meet the terms of the bylaw. What I'm saying is that the bylaw doesn't impose those kinds of requirements. There are none. It only says that a portion of the lot has to be devoted to a nursery use. So in my submissions, the applicant meets that threshold requirement. And again, it is a very important question. It is something that is a prerequisite to the application. So I think it deserves due, you know, investigation, if that's how the board feels, through town council.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation.
I have a question. I understand that this is all conditioned upon the old bylaw. Who operates this nursery, this so-called tree farm? Who operates it?
Well, it's, it's managed by the applicant entity. The LLC and Francisco Tavares, Inc. are controlled by the same party, which is Mr. Gary Tavares, who's here tonight.
So he's the one that manages the nursery?
Correct.
Not his three tenants that?
Correct.
That work on the property and have all the vehicles on the property?
Correct. And Mr. Tavares also has vehicles and equipment on the property as well for his operations.
That answers my question.
Anybody else? Yes, Ralph?
Yes, Miss Moynihan. In reference to the August 29, 2001 letter from Mr. Curry to Tom Clark at that time, there is what appears to be an error because there's reference to the contractor's yard in the very first paragraph, even though 240 38M is quoted, and there is nothing in 240 38M that I can see that talks about contractor's yard. It talks about nurses. So my question to you is, is there any issue with the fact that that Scrivener error, whatever you want to call it, is there, is there any, is there anything about that reference to a contractor's yard in that memorandum that would be considered an issue in the current application that you're asking us to?
I'm, I'm not clear what memorandum you're referring to. You said 2001.
I'm referring to a memorandum from Mr. Curry.
Yes.
Dated August 29, 2001, to the town court, referencing our decision. The decision was made.
Okay.
By the planning board in reference to 240 38M. And it says, it uses the word contractor yard instead of the word nursery. Is there anything, is there anything in that Scrivener error, whatever you want to call it, is there anything in that, in that error that would influence or be pertinent at all to what we are discussing currently?
Well, I don't think I've seen that memorandum, Mr. Curry. So if I could look at it, I'm sure that's exactly what it is.
Madam Chairman, what does this have to do with what we're doing now?
I don't know. I really don't know.
This, I think, on Mr. Herbst is a different property.
Wherever continuance, where, this is a public hearing, right? I wanted just, I mean, last time we heard, changing the subject a little bit on this one issue, but I wanted to go back to what we're, I think what I wanted to hear about. We heard about all kinds of fences being down, the permit not being, have, have any of those things been addressed?
Ma'am.
That's not appropriate?
Can I just intervene a little?
Please.
We have a real, before you even get into any of the details.
Okay.
Before you get into the request of the applicant, the first test they have to pass is whether they have standing in front of the board.
Okay.
They pass the threshold, the gate opens, in they come. About the opinion, the evidence speaks for itself. I understand Laura's position. I understand from the history behind the bylaw and the attorney general's uniformity issues with regard to the time of the date and the imposition of too strict a standard on exempt, 48, Section 3, use agriculture. I, I can't envision right now that the applicant has standing in front of the board. The evidence speaks for itself. I think you need to answer that question before you go any further. So you're not absorbing your time, the applicant's time, and people who are here tonight's time. Otherwise, it's meaningless. So Laura has asked for an opinion from council. I'm confident in my assessment. It's up to the board. I think you need to answer that threshold question before you do anything else. Otherwise, you're wasting your guys' time.
Good.
Ken.
I want to ask my, and the threshold question you're asking is if there is basically the 38M availability with a nursery, correct? This would be accessory, okay. And that's, that's why I asked the question about who operates this nursery and where is it coming from? Because we have contractor's yards there, and I don't see any nursery.
Right.
At all. I don't know where it is. If, I mean, there's trees on the property, but that's just what this is saying. There's trees, and they have three contractor's yards. I drove onto the property today and looked, drove in the front driveway, and I saw a 50-foot huge thing of wood, and I was trying to find out where that is there. But I saw no nursery. I saw, well, there used to be a nursery, and with the 2004, I used to live near there. And there was a nursery. There is no nursery anymore. And that's the threshold question that I believe is not there. I do not believe they have that.
That is what Brian says. He thinks we don't meet the threshold, or that goes into the folder.
This might be, I agree.
And that is what Ms. Moynihan says we need to refer to council to get his reading on whether he agrees with Brian or?
Ultimately, it's your call. If you think, if the board thinks they need assistance from council, ask for it. I'm confident in my assessment. Laura is confident in her assessment. But ultimately, it's up to the board. If you'd like counsel to assist you, of course, ask. And they've asked for a continuance if that's the board's decision. But I think you really need to answer that question before you give us any other details or the minutia.
Do we need a continuance? Because our last meeting is September 30th, so do we need to?
You would need to continue the hearing.
Oh, yeah, but, okay, I'm.
We've got 90 days after the close of the.
Right. After we close it.
Decision.
Okay. I misunderstood. I thought you meant they're asking for an extension on time. Yes, Ralph?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to apologize for referencing something that was my error. It was for a different, a different piece of property, also owned by Mr. Tavares. And my apologies to the, to the applicant and to the, and to the attorney and to Mr. Curry. I don't know how I got this piece of.
It happens.
I, I don't keep things this long.
That's what happens, Ralph, when you've got so much paper floating around.
Everything in there seems to be pertinent to what we're talking about tonight, and yet it's a different piece of property. My apologies to the public.
Are there other comments on this? And what I'm specifically looking for is, do you want to have town council take a look at this? Because Ms. Moynihan suggests something different from what Brian says. So, yes.
Well, I think Ms. Moynihan makes a good point about the legalese with the wording. Should we try to do a site visit and see whether or not we can form an opinion? Or should we go straight to legal counsel? Because the legal counsel is going to determine the verbiage, but he's not going to go out and do a site visit. He's just going to analyze the law.
So perhaps there are two things. Perhaps there are two things, then, that we need to look at.
Personally think there's no nursery, so the applicant has no standing in that threshold. There is no nursery. There is no nursery. Everything that they had before, when you drive under the lot, is empty. That's what the nursery was in the first permit. So how possibly, with all that gone, can you then think that with piles of wood and everything else, that they would have the 38M? There's no nursery. Mr. Tavares himself said he doesn't operate a nursery. There's no commercial greenhouses going on.
Ralph?
I would prefer we do both.
Both a site visit and refer it to town council. So we have the optimum amount of information for us to make a decision.
That would be my approach.
What about Paul?
Well, I think the fundamental issue is, has to be decided by the town council before we do anything. Mr. Curry's come up with an opinion, and it seems a very reasonable opinion. Ms. Moynihan's come up with a little difference in that. So why don't we have town council weigh in on it before running out to the field? Because if he says he supports Mr. Curry, there's no point in going out in the field.
Okay. Bob?
Sitting as a juror would and sitting here looking at his own book and having to buy one side versus the other, I would side with Mr. Curry's version of events. And if I had to vote, I would vote on that side.
Okay. So definitely two town councils. Bob says he would side with Mr. Curry's analysis of it. How about you, Jim?
Well, I think I agree with Ralph. I, I want to hear what the town council says, but he might kick it back and say, "Well, you guys have to make a judgment whether it's really operational, and I'm not going out there, so I think we should do both."
Okay.
Actually do a site visit and be prepared for guidance from town council.
Town council.
I agree on, I think to be, to go slow before we crush a long-term operation is a prudent, slow-paced thing. It doesn't, I don't think it hurts to take a little more time to be a little bit more thorough. And that's the only point I want to make.
And?
Well, like I said, I think we need the site visit to draw our own conclusions of what's on the ground, and Mr. Duffy will give us the opinion of whether or not substantial is appropriate or if just a couple trees is enough to justify a nursery. And I have one more question about the site while we're here, if I could.
Sure. Laura?
So the list of stock items and stuff, is that all grown in one area or is that just various locations around the site?
There's two areas identified on the site plan.
Right.
Where the nursery operation is, which I identified for Mr. Herbst, so those two specific areas.
Well, I see the circled large tree nursery.
Yeah.
And so would the majority of that be contained within that area?
I think that's the accurate majority, yes. And then there's an area from the greenhouses.
Nursery plant storage?
Yes.
Sure.
And, and again, I understand what Mr. Maderos is saying, but I think you need to look at the definition of nursery. And just because the greenhouses were there and people were coming in and buying plants, that isn't required to have a nursery anymore. So the definition of a nursery is, is very unrestricted, and all it requires is that you're growing plants on the site. Yes.
One more question, maybe a question for you. Would we want to ask for a site visit?
Well, the sense that I am getting is that, with a few exceptions, and since we're split on this, it appears that the board would like to have an official site visit and that the board also would like to have Attorney Duffy render an opinion.
So should we ask for that?
Yes.
Tonight?
I believe we should. That's why I restated everything.
Well, I mean, should we ask the applicant while they're here?
I believe he's already been contacted, and, or is that not correct, Mr. Curry?
The applicant would request a continuance to August 26 to allow for an opinion from town council and a board site visit, which the applicant is agreeable to.
Okay. Does that seem reasonable to the board, till August 26?
I think so.
Okay. And, yes, Paul?
On the protocol for site visit, we're discussing a protocol for a site visit, and it hasn't been approved yet. And the new protocol is suggesting that the public can be invited as we go forward. Are we going to get caught up in between not having a protocol approved and trying to do the site visit in timely fashion?
You want to go to the site? Have a posted meeting for you. And look down, take a look. The public doesn't have the right to intermingle with you. They have the right to watch you go on the site, take a view.
Well, would it be advertised as a public hearing? Or at the, would it be?
Well, you're confusing the two terms.
Right.
Hearing is what we're at tonight. Posted meeting is something that.
Thank you.
A site visit is not a hearing.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
But the way the protocol is being developed now, we have to advertise it under the.
It's just posted.
It's just posted.
It's not advertised. It's just posted. I guess one could consider that an advertisement.
And just for the viewers at home, it's just a site visit just for us to see what's on the ground and just take a look. We're not going to discuss it. The public's not going to discuss it.
No.
Nope.
If they come, they can watch us come and go. That's it.
How exciting is that, right? Okay. Does the board have any further questions or comments?
I, I don't know.
Okay. Then I'm going to move to the public, and please don't reiterate what we've already heard, if you'll be so kind. Yes.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Edward Kirk for Randy Repose of the Abutter. In, in view of what appears to be the proceeding, I wouldn't mind waiting until after you've got your opinion from Mr. Duffy and you've had your site visit to make my comments both respect to what Mr. Duffy might say and what might come out of the site visit. Because I do have some other information I'd like to offer in response to what Laura Moynihan has offered tonight, both on the legal side, her interpretation of the bylaw, and the business of what constitutes a real nursery and what constitutes a pretext for a contractor's yard. But it may be better to wait to do that until the next hearing, so if that's okay, that's what I do. If the public hearing still is open.
I think we should do this for all issues. I think we need to resolve this one thing before we open up the discussion again to everything else.
That's fine, sure.
I think, so I think his point's well taken. We'd like to invite the public back after we get over this next step.
Because then we will have seen it and we will have gotten a bigger opinion.
Yeah, because if we don't, we're just starting off on other things.
Yeah.
So I think we got to get it out of the way.
I think you're absolutely correct on that, and thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate that. So with the indulgence of the public, we will do the site visit, we will get the legal opinion, and then we will reach out to the public for comments again. If it is germane, because remember, we're looking at legal counsel's opinion here.
If we have determined it has no standing, there's no need for any more comment.
Correct.
Why waste everybody's time?
Correct.
So let's get over that hurdle.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So you, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Before, so you want to have a motion to continue the hearing to a certain place, date, time? You need to do that so the public knows you're going to reopen or continue the hearing.
Are we looking at August 26?
That's what we're looking at? Yes, so it would be Tuesday, August 26, 6:30 here in the town.
I'd like to move that we. I'd like to move that we continue this meeting August 26th at 6:30 at the town hall.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that this hearing be continued until August 26th. Seven, uh, 6:30, sorry, habit after many years, so at 6:30 here in town hall.
Will there be any more discussion?
Continue.
Mr. Kirk indicated that he didn't see... Oh, at that point, there will be discussion. Yes.
No, I don't mean, I understand there'll be discussion on the 26th.
Yeah.
I mean this evening. A lot of people have commented. Do we want to just...
Mr. Kirk and Brian both said... What?
I think tonight, you need to continue your hearing to the 26th. I thought this was what the board wants to do. And then you need to answer the threshold, that threshold question. Nothing can really, nothing really matters until you answer that question. No fences, not anything. So let's get the hearing continued. And then I'm sure somewhere along the line, we either have a full hearing again, or the question is moved. And the planning board simply has no stand, the applicant has no standing, the board simply has a procedural denied.
I want to make absolutely sure that the public does understand what is taking place. And I know you've gotten up to say something.
I think you recognize me as a sitting.
Yes, I know that. But it was part of this process here, the...
Madam Chairman, I think we're in order right now to have discussion on my motion.
We are.
Okay.
And I wanted to make sure that the public understands what that is.
And that, so we're discussing whether we're going to vote on that motion or not? And then I would like to have a vote. And if we lose, then we can go on to something else. That's the way I'd like to proceed.
So for the public, what it means is that there is a legal question as to whether this even has standing. And if town council decides that it does have standing, then we will continue this discussion with the public in the comments. If town council decides that there is no legal standing, then the whole issue goes away. There, we don't have any reason to hear this. So there's no reason for you all to make further comments. It just doesn't have any standing before us at that, if that's the determination of council. So I wanted to make sure that you all understood what is going on here tonight. Now, we will go back to have discussion by the board on Jim's motion.
That was a discussion. I was just...
Pretty much. I summarized it.
I think he took care of it.
Okay. I didn't know whether anybody else on the board wanted to...
I don't know. I kind of felt that there are people here that may not be able to make another meeting. And maybe we should hear some, some comments from the public if they feel inclined, even though it may not be germane to what we've...
But very limited. We would like to keep it very limited. Is that correct?
And if it, if it isn't what we've already heard about fences and rodents and things like that. Yeah.
Yes, Ralph?
I think that if there's anyone who wishes to speak tonight or to be heard, they could submit it in writing.
Could do that, too. Because we do put all those in our file, and we do look at them. And that will allow all of you to feel that you are definitely being heard, even before we get the ruling from town council. Is that okay?
That would be okay.
All right. So does anybody else on the board have a comment before we take a vote on the motion to refer this to town council? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. And then I believe there is a site visit already posted? Is that correct, Brian, or no?
I'll be in contact with Ms. Moynihan about Thursday afternoon.
Thursday afternoon at some point. And the board will be notified by email. Is that correct?
No, we get a phone call.
Okay, a phone call, then.
Just a procedural question. Did the motion include the continuance to August 26th?
That's what the motion was.
That was what the motion was. And if anybody from the public wishes to add to our public record here, before we get a determination from town council, please drop a note to the planning office. Okay? Thank you.
There's still the opportunity that the town council, so the proceeding will forward. There's still the public hearing.
Absolutely.
We've got a lot of work to do if he says that.
That's why I tried to make it very clear.
And right now, that is scheduled for the 26th.
We're trying not to waste time.
Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight. And please do write your comments in if you wish.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we continue back to our regular schedule.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Okay, we do have to continue our meeting, folks, so please move outside if you will.
Give them a whack for talking too much.
Have we seen a county meeting yet?
So there's a, in the package, you have some articles for the November town meeting. And then July 15th, draft articles. Some flow from some discussions, I guess, from the housing committee. So put a divorce package for your consideration. At least discussion tonight, which might be interesting for the November town meeting with this. And the first is an article, "The Century Men in Public Use Districts," giving words for the elderly from public housing.
Oh, that's nice.
And, "Public or non-profit housing for the elderly." We certainly make that public or not, or not-for-profit housing. This is, in public use districts, you can have up to 60 units per acre for the public or non-profit housing for the elderly. But we make that very good. And it obvious some issues with regards to, you know, certain age discrimination issues. And we thought might be a good idea then, if it's something the town should have, because, you know, it's who your town is, not what it is sometimes. It might be good to have public or non-profit housing for all age groups. So just for the board's consideration, I think this goes to other discussions, I think, between the roundtable. This is, I've told the citizens advisory group. So we bring it here for a further discussion from the board.
Good. Okay.
Any questions or comments, or initial reactions, or more than that?
I think it would be wise, because we are identifying a far broader scope of people who need to benefit. So I think it would be a wise change. Yes, Ralph?
Right. I'm the planning board representative to the citizens advisory group. And it's being orchestrated by our assistant, town planner, who's doing a terrific job. And this was, this was one of the things that the citizens advisory committee decided would be a first step in moving forward to providing more, more affordable housing for the town. There's a, there was another article, and I haven't finished reading these, but I believe that Marlene gave as an example, that, and many of us have seen this before, you've seen a school shut down and then converted to housing in other towns. And am I correct? Marlene, this is the example that you brought forward. And that very well could happen here. And so this would allow that to happen. And it would allow for housing for, other than just elderly people, in the, in the school building that was converted. So I would recommend that when you read this, to take that into consideration. And I personally would vote for, in favor of this, of this article.
Brian, can I ask you, I could not hear the first 10 sentences you said because of the crowd noise. I didn't understand you.
This, this section applies only in public use.
That's what I thought. And that's really a narrow strip right along the road in most areas. I'm trying to...
Like a large school.
Oh, a big school.
All schools.
All schools are already zoned public use?
Except the high school. So now it's...
No one would want to look at it.
Okay, I understand.
But, right, a lot of...
It's not affordable either.
Right. It's only, is that, that purple section of the land, it's not a lot of land we're talking about. It's already existing public use, or it's a little strip along a beat, two-zone in some of the highways.
Again, a lot of Quist campus is public use zone. And there's a little bit of public use zoning up around Cedar Lake and North Falmouth. But most of it's publicly owned or institutionally. It used to be known as the institutional zone back in the 40s and 50s.
But what, how does this affect, if I'm correct, in West Falmouth, isn't there a strip, like 20 feet or 30 feet, that's got that zoning that runs, that separates?
Predecessor planning boards utilized public use zones as setbacks.
Okay, that explains, that's, that's where, now I understand. Thank you for that clarification.
200-foot public use zone found stoppage shop. Someday, it'll probably be, you know, absorbed into another zoning scheme. But for the most part, for the most part, these are public. They're institutionally owned.
That's so we can cut through and skip the light, right?
You are bad.
I appreciate you repeating that. Thank you.
No problem. So it's something to consider. The warrant for the town meeting flows in September, it's got to be word in, I think it's the second week in September. So you have some time to think about this. Look at the public use zone, look at the public use map, familiarize yourself with it. It's a good idea. I'm not asking for the board to vote tonight, but introduce this articles for your, for your thought process.
Okay. Marlene?
There's one thing I want to add. Many of your elderly and portable housing projects are zoned public use. Taddy departments, the Adnons Building and the Housing and Recreation Building on Grant Avenue are public use zoning districts. This wouldn't be making them non-conforming. You're not prohibiting public use from being used for elderly housing. It's just widening it for other, other age groups, too. So if you are asked the question, if the existing public housing would become non-conforming if it would not.
And it wouldn't change any restrictions on those parcels that are already there. It would only apply to new ones, properties being converted to residential use to be open for all ages. It's already public property. It's not a big deal.
It just makes sense to expand.
All right. Well, take, take a look at the zoning map. Take a look at the article and the zoning bylaw. And I'm sure we'll bring this back for a vote sometime for this. The next article is, now that Conservation Commission has adopted its regulations with regards to flood hazard zones, I'd ask the planning board to seriously consider bringing this to town meeting. Right now, we do have both, now the Conservation Commission regulations and the zoning bylaw that regulates FEMA VE and AE zones. Our recommendation is to eliminate it from the zoning bylaw. And now that the maps have changed, we adopted maps dated June, or July of...
16th, July 16th.
There's no any bylaw references to maps from 1992 to 1986. So we need to eliminate this sooner than later. So I would recommend this for the warrant to the board without any hesitation. Meanwhile, I want you to look at it. Again, you need to vote tonight. But the, the whole premise of utilizing the Conservation Commission regulations was to avoid any question of whether or not we had definitely maps, we would make thousands of properties not before. So we would have to eliminate this from the zoning bylaws so we don't have, A, duplication of efforts, and B, the reference to wrong maps.
Okay.
That. And the next article, I'd like the board to really seriously consider. We've had a discussion with others on it. We've talked about this in house quite a time. The planning board has a keen interest in some of the site planning details that evolved around the appearance of the building and the architecture of buildings. Back in the early 90s, late 80s, we tried to avoid planning boards as regulatory boards, areas that, you know, they really couldn't get it. It has set up somewhat of a cumbersome process over the years. And I sort of come full circle or change my opinion on this. I think because the planning board has a plan review process, it's no longer a special permit, it's been for 20 years. And because I think the board offers an advisory opinion from what on some of these issues of building construction, you may want to think about looking at being the design review committee. That way, there's no referrals back and forth, there's no guessing. You get to look at these matters as a point of advice. You won't have regulatory authority, but you can at least try to influence the outcome of the design. If the applicant says, I like my steel Ramco building, one of my favorite architectural styles, so be it. But I think the time has come for the planning board to seriously consider. The design review committee has a great job, they've done a great job. There is still the sign committee. They have a role under the sign bylaw, which is a general bylaw. But the process has become a little bogged down, cumbersome. You're looking at a site plan, you're familiar with the concepts. You may want to think about being the design review committee under site plan. And I just hope it opens up for your thoughts and comments.
I'd like to applaud that.
I would, too. Well, we as a board do not really get referrals from the design review committee. And yet, we keep getting slapped down. How could you allow this without comments? And it seems to hit just this big hole. There's, there's nothing there. I like this.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yes, Ralph?
Right, Brian. So that, that says that we're going to eliminate the paragraph that says we will refer an application to the design review committee. But it doesn't say that the design review committee will be eliminated, does it?
No, it's still a stolen entity.
Right.
That resides in the town, under the signed bylaw.
Right.
You will, somewhere in there, see, delete section 240, 190, 185 A, B, and C in their entirety.
Yeah.
That's the design review committee under the zoning bylaw.
Okay, I had to look at that. Okay, I'll, I'll...
But they will still reside, they will look at all sign applications of, under the general bylaw.
They're appointed by the selectmen.
Under C, though, it does give the membership to the design review committee. Will that be incorporated somewhere else under the general?
The design review committee is the town charter and code and how they're constituted and how they're appointed, resides in there.
Okay. So this whole thing can be taken away. Yes, Jim?
But 185A says that a design review committee shall be established. And you're saying we're going to delete that?
Right.
So we're going to do away with the design review committee?
In zoning.
In zoning. They still have a role under the general bylaw, under the sign bylaw.
In zoning.
I can have a design review.
Okay, got it. I got it. Thank you.
You, you be the designer.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it would be efficient for the public, because they'll get to see, discussion on the design will be televised. Those are two things that design review does not have the ability, well, it doesn't happen. They don't get, the newspaper very rarely goes there, the cameras are never there, and sometimes there's no one at the meetings. And they, right or wrongly, approve an awful lot of important things. So I'm in favor of bringing it to the, more of a public forum.
Well, and if we add this section to it, that says, hey, look, now we have authority to look at these things, which we currently can only do by, ugh.
It is still only advisory role. Is that correct, Brian? We're, we're...
Under site plan review, again, it's, you really can't compel the architect.
Right. We can, right.
So you're going to look at this under site plan review.
But if there's other...
When site plans are incorporated to special permits, and sometimes you have a little more flexibility there, but the site plan review...
Well, the other thing this does, though, is if we are... Well, the other thing this does though, is if we are looking at this, it gets incorporated as part of our decisions under site plan review, which then referred to the ZBA. So it makes it a more official part. We don't have to go to the point of adding a referral-
Right.
-that we put these concerns into.
It gives us and the public more information to make decisions on.
And it won't always come into play, but when it does, at least we'll be ready.
Correct.
Yeah.
Wow, that was resounding support for that one, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Yes, Paul?
I'd just suggest we have a discussion with the members of the design review before proposing this to the, in the town. I think it needs to be an open discussion with that committee, what we're really trying to do, because there's going to be misunderstanding if we do that.
Yeah, and you don't like to have a war set up. They have to understand that we're not taking away their existence. Yeah, Jim?
They have, well, I don't really want to say anything. They, they've had a hard time complying with the open meeting laws of having minutes and processes and agendas, and they haven't been able to do it. So I don't want to offend them, but I think we're solving a really, in my opinion, a really big problem that some of your meetings don't pass the guidelines for open meeting. They, they just don't.
Right, well, we'll, again, we'll, I'll just along with Art, Nella, and others, and I'm sure we'll get their thoughts on it, in cases of disappointment, but again, I think the board can afford it. The public decision-making process, that helps the public, helps the board. Hopefully, we can find another role for them. But I will look, I will look Art that this is on the planning board's discussion agenda, perhaps sometime before the court's vote.
Okay, great. So, shall we move on? Yes, Ralph?
I, I would have one question for Marlene. Marlene, we had talked at the Citizens Advisory Committee about another possible bylaw. You're not planning to introduce that this fall. It was, what, about accessory apartments or something like that? In- no, what was it again? I can't remember.
Yeah, I, you're probably going to be asked to consider a lot of bylaw changes, but this one, I think, this one I brought forward to you tonight because it's, it's so simple. The other ones, I think the plan needs to be finished first, and-
You think they'll make fall town meeting?
No, I don't think they'll make fall town meeting, but I think they need more discussion.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, so shall we move on now? Update the site visit protocol? And we need to vote to hold a public hearing to amend planning board rules and regulations. And Brian, would you speak to that, please?
You'll note draft, we'll get the draft. Change paragraph 155, at the appropriate time after the 20th. We'd like to codify this, other boards, if someone's done the same thing. But to do that, I'd like to ask the board to see when to vote, to hold a hearing, because you need a hearing to amend your subdivision rules, and you need a hearing for your special permit and site plan review. And this is where this will reside. So I just, I'd ask for just a simple vote to hold a hearing. This is the draft language, it can, it could change, it could be amended, but at least get that process going.
Comments from the board?
Vote it.
Okay.
That's, that's on our, this thing about the site plan, site visits, right?
Correct.
And, and I, I don't quite understand the necessity for, if it's just a, if it's just the way we're going to operate, and we're going to incorporate it into our, our procedures, why do we have to hold a hearing?
Subdivision control law requires that you have to hold a hearing to amend your regulations, same with your special permit rules. You have to actually hold a hearing. You just can't vote. This isn't like a policy, it is, this is actual rule of law.
So it's going to be in the subdivision control and not in the zoning?
If, if they're in both.
It'll be in both?
So the applicant's no, and the board's 20 years from now will know.
So we don't need to, we don't need a hearing for this, but we do for the subdivision control?
Sure for subdivision, and I'm positive you need it for your special permit. You have a special permit in site plan rules?
Right.
And I'm pretty sure you need it for both.
Okay. Okay.
So wherever we need this to fit, we need to do a public hearing on?
To make it to codify the, where they should reside. Conservation Commission has it in their rules, zoning board has it in their rules, under the zoning board's special permit rules. And I think it's a good idea, and I recommend it to this board.
Okay, I remove that we schedule a hearing for the proposed protocol for site visits changes.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved to second, and any further discussion? Yes, Paul?
Brian, with all due respect, I find this protocol somewhat awkward, and I'd like to at least write a draft to you with some suggested changes. So if you give me this electronically, I'll be happy to track change and get it back to you. For example, site visits, if requested by the board, I think we have to tie it back to the board has to request it, a number of things like that. So rather than take the time now, I'll be happy to provide some suggestions to you, and you can take them as you see fit.
That's fine. In fact, any, any board member, before we have the hearing, if you have a comment or a question or a change, shoot open.
And I think we should not say anything at the site visits, so no one has to take minutes.
That's so happened.
I think that should be a policy.
You might have to say something. Is that tree on the lot?
They learn so fast, don't they?
So, but tonight, we're not quoting on this?
I understand that.
Okay.
We're voting to have a hearing.
And we're voting to have a hearing.
I'm just suggesting that if it's appropriate, I'd like to add some input to it.
Well, that's what we're doing. We're looking towards perfecting this as much as we can. As Brian said, just because it's put in, we can still amend it as time goes on too, but better to do it best-
But we ought to have something that we can-
Yeah, yeah. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Introduction of the zoning bylaw review process.
Some time ago, I handed out a report from general code public area, asked the board to read that, familiarize themselves with some of the changes that were, I didn't really read tonight. This is about a 50, 60-page report from general code, and the first 37 pages of it were, but they're very important on us, semi-collins, we've eliminated some verbiage, and the remaining portions are very substantive changes. We are not going to be in a position to bring anything to this November town meeting. Some of these issues have resided in the bylaw for generations, 30 generations, so we want to take our time. But I'd like to, over the next course of the next few months, reschedule some time for the planning board to get into some of the punctuation and, call it surplusage, verbiage in the bylaw. Maybe connect to a consensus of some of the priority items that you see as substantive changes, and substantive portion of it. And I'd like to be able to schedule a meeting. The zoning board also has a subcommittee, but I think it'd be best to have both boards as a topic of discussion. You will have your priorities for changes and whatnot. You still brings on your articles, and you still make the recommendations for town meeting, but I think it'd be nice to have a process also where we have a meeting with the zoning board of appeals, to hear their thoughts and issues and concerns with regards to what they see as their priorities also. So I'm going to be kind of ranting this up over the next month or two or three, but I don't envision anything, anything from this November town meeting. I'd like to be able to have something for the April town meeting, which means, you know, we'd have to have something wrapped up by January. So it's about five months. And I see most of this work happening probably in October, in November. If you have any initial thoughts on what you might want to see as priorities of the board, we're probably looking at this in our starting product list.
Yes, Brad?
My initial thought is, can we get that printed by you guys, so we don't have to print the 50 pages or read it on our, yeah, computers?
We should have an electronic copy of that.
We do have the electronic copy, but-
If you need, if you need printed out, yeah, there's a big document, yours and heavy as hell.
Okay.
May not be happy, but she'll do it if you ask nicely.
Didn't you give us something?
Yeah, we- We have it electronically. No, we have the check box. I sat and-
You, you gave us a, a real thick document a couple of months ago and said, this is going to be your homework for this winter or something.
Oh, did we already have that?
Isn't that the document?
We're, we're back. I think, I think I made copies.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, maybe I was mistaken.
I know I gave you the electronic versions of it. I asked you to read it, so that's why I didn't ask you to read things on the side. But I'd like to be able to at least reintroduce, revisit it, and I think that the process is going to be, and we'd probably like to have at least one or two meetings with the board.
Please reissue the assignment with a due date on it.
Be prepared to have full discussion probably sometime right after the weekend.
Okay.
I could turn mine in with all the checks and stuff in the box.
And there's, there's no changes since you gave us that document?
Correct.
Okay, so that's current.
And we're not proposing to bring anything to the November town meeting based on general code.
Yeah, I got it.
Who wrote those articles? That's it.
Okay.
It's a real stimulating read, guys. It didn't even get my attention yet. Pull it back out.
We're up to your efforts on that over the next month, and we'll visit that in areas starting in September, you know, before in October, maybe not yet.
Top of the pile.
And I also, I'd like to add, Brian is hopeful for that meeting, but I've been contacted by the chairman of the board of appeals, and he would like to get the boards together, so.
But you get prepared also in the next four, five weeks, you'll have to come up on the table.
Okay, move on to general correspondence. We have a copy of the watershed. This is Oyster Pond Environmental Trust newsletter, so that you can see that in the planning office. We also have a letter, uh-
Storaphone?
Yeah, enclosed, please find the following nomination form, Oak Grove Cemetery, 46 Jones Road, Falmouth. The nomination has been voted eligible by the state review board and has been signed by the state historic preservation officer. The owner of the property was notified of pending state review board consideration 30 to 45 days before the meeting, and were afforded the opportunity to comment. Both were redacted and unredacted, both redacted and unredacted versions of the nomination text, paper and electronic are enclosed. This letter was dated July 3rd, and it was sent to Mr. Paul J. Loether, National Register of Historic Places, Department of the Interior in DC. Was sent by Betsy Friedberg, National Register Director, Massachusetts Historical Commission. So this is for your information. Yes, Paul?
Oak Grove Cemetery is a cemetery on Main Street?
Yes. 46 Jones Road.
Oh, the one on Jones Road.
Right. Ralph?
Yeah, just as a comment, the Oak Grove Cemetery has come to the community preservation committee for funds to restore it, for restoration of part of it, and town meeting approved that. And they're, they've come to us again this, this funding round for additional funds to take it further and restore more gravestones and other things in the cemetery.
That's great.
Yes.
Considering-
They're, they're, they're all volunteers, and they're not elected like we are. They're, they're elected, well, they are. They're elected by their own board, but they are hard-working people, and they don't get paid, just like us.
Just like us. The big bucks. Okay, folks, I need a motion.
I have a question.
Yes?
We tentatively had a joint meeting with the board of selectmen tonight, and would you give an update to that, please?
Brian, please give an update.
Okay, well, your next meeting, just on your agenda now, your next meeting is August the 12th, and now you'll also have August the 26th on your agenda to continue the hearing. There was also the meeting posted for Thursday at 12 o'clock, this site visit, 25 Cracker Road. I'll confirm that with Attorney Moynihan, and I'll contact you all.
But Paul is asking about update? Oh, okay, sorry.
I'll get that before I do that, because that's not on your agenda. Your next meeting technically is Thursday, but I'll confirm that with Attorney Moynihan.
And I just wanted to announce, as, I know it's not a committee report night, I didn't do it last time, I didn't mention it because I didn't have the official notice, and we lost one of our members of the coastal ponds management committee, Steve Aubrey. He seemed like a really good guy. I only worked with him my short time on the committee, but he was a pretty thoughtful, pretty smart guy, and he was also a fellow pond watcher, so he'll be missed. And I just wanted to announce that.
Thank you.
Yes, the update for the joint meeting is that we prefer two dates, August the 18th and 19th. So it indicated that for the selectmen, we prefer the 18th, it's a Monday minute. I think four members of this board have responded that the 18th is okay. One has, one has indicated no. So we're looking at August the 18th for our next joint meeting, if that's wish of the board. Anyone else we can't make it?
If I was unable to make it, I will be out of town that week.
But everyone else can make it.
All right, so now, I can?
I'll, I'll email him and say the 18th is the joint meeting, but just keep it an hour or hour and a half.
Okay, great. Anything else?
Most of them do adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
He had lung cancer.